November 5th, Duval City Council meeting to order at 7:01 PM. And Clerk, would you please pull up the flag for the flags salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Flag.
At the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And Clerk, would you please take the roll?
Councilmember Rudnicki.
Here.
Councilmember McHenry.
Here.
Councilmember Remington.
Here.
Councilmember Hoag.
Here.
Councilmember Napland.
Here.
Councilmember Lengel.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Under consent agenda, please add payroll for November 5th, 2020 in the amount of $139,396.90. Claims for October 25th, 2020, November 5th, 2020, in the amount of $589,286.33. And under additions at the end, after unfinished business, please add continued budget presentation discussion. And with that, do we have any councilmembers that want to speak this evening? Yes, any councilmembers that are going to want to speak this evening? Remington, okay. All right. And then we did have a public comment. Someone had been requesting that we move public comment to the end of the meeting. I advise a person that takes a vote. Counsel. We do have a public hearing on the agenda, so if it's budget related, that would be the appropriate place, but wanted to, it doesn't look like that person is on the line. So it's up to counsel on what you want to do with that. Mayor Protem Remington.
I saw that suggestion. At first, I really liked it, but it's a little bit of a two-way street, Mayor. The benefit of having early public comment is counsel gets to take in that feedback from citizens on things that we'll be discussing during the evening, and that may influence our decisions. If we had public discussion after the meeting, we wouldn't get that feedback until after we've had discussions. So I get them wanting to hear what we have to say before they provide input, but I think it's appropriate to have it where we've aligned it. Folks can certainly put their comments in after meetings are done. You know, or contact us. We usually have a three-touch rule, so they have time to be able to have that input. So personally, I would prefer to leave it where it is.
Councilmember McHenry.
I think we should definitely always have comments at the beginning. However, I just wanted to say that I'm not opposed to adding in another time for people to comment at the end, as long as we still always keep that. What Mayor Protem Remington said is exactly what I was thinking. It's important to hear what people have to say before we discuss. But, you know, sometimes it is hard. It's easier if somebody's at a meeting to just say their piece after we've discussed it, if they have a follow-up comment. And funny enough, I think this came up with Councilmember Scott Thomas, who held position three before me. I think he once upon a time brought this up at a council meeting years ago, and it didn't go through at that time, but I just wanted to say that I'm willing to consider that if other councilmembers agree.
Thank you. Is there anyone else on council that wants to speak to that, or are we following the Mayor Protem's recommendation of moving forward? Councilmember Napland.
I like the idea of also offering it after. There are some cities that I think even sometimes allow public comment on each item, which seems like could get out of control, but yeah, I don't mind if, you know, we also have it after, especially this one time, but it doesn't look like that person potentially is here at the meeting. But always at the beginning, just because it might inform us as we make our decisions during the meeting, I want to make sure people have a chance to speak before we deliberate on something.
All right, so it looks like we are, unless I'm hearing any objections, we're leaving it as is for now. So with that, do we have a motion to approve this evening's council agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Do we have a second?
Second, Amy McHenry.
Mayor Protem Remington moved, and Councilmember McHenry seconded for adoption of the agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Moving on, do we have a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda?
Mike Remington, so moved.
Second, McHenry.
Mayor Protem Remington moved. Councilmember McHenry seconded. Approval of the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. And with that, we will move on to comments from the audience. So it looks like we have two attendees. The clerk will admit you, and if you would like to speak, you'll have three minutes. And go ahead and unmute yourself and provide your name and address and speak to whatever topic you wish. Looks like we have Adrielle Funnas back.
Yes, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize if you hear my children screaming. It's nighttime, so. Anyway, I, there was a couple of things. In fact, actually, you brought up one of my questions about allowing a comment at the end as well as the beginning, especially if there are things that are maybe being passed that that was actually one of my questions, if that could be considered as well, not only at the beginning, but at the end for public comments. Especially as we see how, you know, votes happen, or who does what, or whatever, that we can have a little bit extra time to speak as a public. So that was one of the things. And also, I was asked, I wanted to know, because I know when we meet in person, it's easy to see the end of the meeting, but when we're on Zoom, last, I was on last week, and it closed off immediately, and I was wondering if it was possible for everybody to sign off and then close the meeting for the public to see that everybody has gotten off without their so we don't, if there's just, just for transparency reasons, that there isn't any discussion afterwards, happening after the meeting is adjourned.
So to be clear, when the clerk ends the meeting, it kicks everybody out all at once? So as soon as she clicks end, everybody's out, including the councilmembers?
Okay, all right. Well, I know, but that's, first of all, how do we really know that? And to be honest, I mean, and I am speaking out of transparency when we don't know that as a public, and we can't see that everybody is off. So I'm just saying that that's not clear as, as a public, that that is something that has happened. So but when you're in person, you're able to see that everybody is adjourned. So I'm just saying that the transparency isn't there. And the other thing I would just like to comment on is I just would like to just, and I know I only have three minutes, and I'm going to send a letter, but I have just noticed a little bit of a lack of decorum with some of the city council members and the mayor and how it spoke, how people are speaking to each other, and I would like to say that I've noticed that there's a lot of lack of respect, and I don't appreciate the way that some have speak to each other and the public. There's a lot of defensive talk, and I just would like to say that I've noticed that, and I would appreciate if that was addressed because it's not appreciated as a member of the public to see that.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Seeing none, we'll move on to the mayor's report.
Yeah.
Yes?
I, I apologize. I did receive one public comment and forwarded it on to council. I just wanted to summarize it for the record. This comment came from Jennifer Rushing, and the first topic was related to the council vacancy and asked a few questions that will be answered during the presentation this evening, and then also commented regarding appreciation for a more open and transparent process for the civil emergency ordinance.
Thank you. All right, so moving on to mayor's report. It's been busy, but with budget, but yet doesn't seem like it has been as busy it is. First item I wanted to bring up is the Public Issues Committee agenda just came up, so I wanted to ask Councilmember Hoag real quickly about the King County Zone Coordinators, just kind of where that's at, because that was a real important issue to do administration and our emergency managers as far as retaining those contracted zone coordinators rather than the moving in-house, and so curious to hear the latest on that, and then hopefully, hopefully it's moving forward as we need it to.
It is still moving forward. Next Thursday, they moved our next pick meeting to Thursday instead of Wednesday, so we have another pick meeting. It'll be on the agenda again. But it was really wonderful to see how Sound Cities, all the cities, support the small cities, even though it wasn't some of the larger cities to retain that. They were supportive of it because we needed it. And, you know, there was only myself and I think maybe one or two other small cities that spoke up on the issue, wanting to retain it, and Sound Cities is supporting it. So it's, I think that it's still being pushed forward, and I can give you a report after the Thursday meeting.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure we didn't have to write a letter or anything to pick before next week.
I will let you know, let you know. I'll send you an email.
Thank you. So moving on to other items in the report, next week, the North End Mayors Meeting has been moved to next week. Normally, that would have been on Tuesday. We did have our Valley Mayors Meeting Tuesday morning, when we're joined by Reps Callan and Ramos, where we had discussions about transportation and upcoming legislative session. I don't know if we've talked about it as a council as a whole yet, but the this upcoming legislative session will be virtual, and they're working out the kinks and how to make that happen. There will be some staff that are in Olympia, but right now, it's on Zoom, and they're working hard to figure out how to do the voting appropriately and what have you. But legislative session is likely to be far fewer bills, more omnibus bills. It'll be easier for us to participate simply because of the video option, but it will be very different this year, and I know that they are working on trying to get a transportation infrastructure package out as well. Last week, the Puget Sound Regional Council met to approve, Puget Sound Regional Council General Assembly met to approve Vision 2050, the amendments that we previously talked about as a group from Snohomish County. They did pass, however, as, you know, we discussed before, City of Duval voted against them. Ironically enough, the Washington State Department of Transportation also voted against the Snohomish County amendments due to transportation concurrency on our state highways. The AWC Broadband Working Group met on Tuesday. I was not able to attend that meeting and had just received word from AWC. We'll get a synopsis of that tomorrow. Basically, the point of the meeting was to review some draft legislation that helps us out in the broadband area with all the work going on in ports, et cetera. So when I get that info, I'll send it out to council, and with that, I have nothing further. Any questions? All right, seeing none. Mayor Protem Remington.
Mayor, thank you. I'd already brought up this topic at our Cal, and if folks want to go listen to what council had to say individually about Matt Iyer, one of our councilmembers. Matt resigned his position last week, and we just wanted to take a moment to recognize what an incredible asset he is, both to our community, to our council and city. Matt sets about the best example I've ever seen as, as a loving husband and father. Certainly on council, he was one of those that spoke up and clarified things in ways that most of us were thinking, getting things right to the point, moving things along. Matt was really instrumental in many of the improvements. I think truly you could say of Matt, he left the city a better place and improved so many things for us. And on the personal side, he's just a friend and somebody that could provide counsel and was a good listening ear and encouraging. So we wish him well, and he works at the city of Marysville. I think they're so fortunate to have Matt. And tonight, we'll be certainly talking about how we go about the technical part of filling his position. But I did want to, at the council meeting as well, just tell Matt how much we care about him and thank him so much for his service to the city all these years. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Moving on, do we have any council committee reports this evening? Seeing none, we'll move on to administration update, and the clerk will lead the discussion on the council vacancy appointment schedule.
Laura, did you want to do your presentation first, or just?
You can go first. That's fine. Thank you.
Good evening, and Council. Jody Wykoff, City Clerk. I am just here to talk about the council vacancy. Mayor Protem Remington just summarized that Councilmember Iyer recently resigned his seat. And I did confirm with election since the staff report was developed that this person will serve until the certification of the 2021 general election. So that's towards the end of November, a year from now, and then that person would have to run for election to finish the term through 2023. Your council procedures dictate the process for filling the vacancy, which I also included in the pocket. The suggested schedule was also in the staff report, and for the public, it would start by advertising the application process on Monday, the 9th, with a deadline of November 30th. And then on the December 1st meeting, staff would report to council and confirm that, you know, they want to move forward with the appointment process. If there are three or less applications, we can do the appointment at the December 15th meeting. If there are more than three applications, then we would narrow it down to three at the December 15th meeting with the appointment taking place on the January 5th, 2021 meeting. Council does have 90 days from the date of vacancy to fill the seat before it is put in the hands of the county to take over the appointment process, and that would get you to about January 25th is basically your deadline to fill the vacancy. And going back to the public comment that we received with some of the questions, we would be notifying the public about the vacancy through social media, our website. Depending on council's direction tonight, we may or may not be able to put something in the newsletter that is out in December. We would also, we could put it in the Seattle Times in our Legals notices. We would also put it on the City Hall Notice Window, and I'm not sure if the library has public notice window going on right now. I think now that they might be at 25% capacity, they might, but we'll see. The timeline is based on what council decides tonight. The person asked a question about if the mayor gets a vote on the appointment, and the answer to that question is no. And let's see, what was the other? I already answered that one. I think that was it. I'm available for questions if anybody has questions. Ms. Lengel.
Thank you. I took a look at the proposed schedule and also the information attached in terms of the council procedures, and my concern is that the schedule is very aggressive, considering, A, we're in the middle of a pandemic, and so getting adequate notification and just the whole process is going to be more difficult. B, we are in the middle of budget, and we want to be sure that we have enough time to get all this work done. C, I guess I look at it, and then I think about the fact that we are in the holidays coming up and how that might affect the schedule. So what I noted in the procedures is that 21 days is a minimum, and I'd like to hear from other councilmembers about how they feel about that minimum, and if there are options to make that a little longer and do more compressed schedule in terms of the review and the approval process, because what this would do is put us on December the 15th, which is also the goal for the budget. And it just seems like unfortunately, the timing is what it is. I am not familiar with the King County statute on the 90 days. Maybe somebody could provide that, but it just seems like it's a very difficult schedule to do an adequate job of filling a very much needed council position. So those are my comments.
It is a state statute, not a county statute, about the filling the vacancy in the 90 days. And like I said, 90 days from the date of the vacancy is January 25th, so we do have, I was just looking for my 2021 calendar, because I don't have one on my wall, so your meetings in January are the 5th and 19th, so you could go to your second meeting in January and still be within that 90 days.
Thank you so much for that clarification. Anyway, I'll just let my comments stand there.
Any other councilmembers want to speak to that? Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, I agree with what Councilmember Lengel was getting at with her comment, and I would lean more toward having more open time for people to apply, and you know, I know it seems tight, but there's just so much going on, so possibly, you know, hopefully voting on somebody to appoint someone at the first meeting in January, perhaps? Or the second. I'd be good with either of those.
Councilmember Napland.
I'd rather allow it to be advertised in the water bill. There's a lot of people not on Facebook, and I don't know a lot of people that get the Seattle Times and dig through that and look for something of that nature, so I'd like to see it in the water bill. I also don't want to rush. It's the holiday season. People, you know, have a lot going on. I'd like, I'd like the deadline extended.
Right. Any other councilmembers want to speak to that? Councilmember Hoag?
I'm in agreement with what the other councilmembers have said. A January date, I think, would be better for sure, so.
Perfect. So what date does council want that potential first round of interviews to be? Which meeting? Or do you want to schedule a special meeting in January? Councilmember Hoag?
I think the first meeting in January would probably be good in case, I mean, we might end up having to go to a second meeting, right?
Correct. If there's more than, if there's more than three candidates, then it'll go to a second round.
It'd be good maybe to start with the first.
Okay, is there consensus from council on that? If not, just please speak up and say no. Okay, not seeing any, so that's great. That actually is better for us because it allows us to get it in the water bill. So Jody, is there any other information you needed from council on this?
The only other question I want to make sure that I'm getting clear consensus on is, is council okay with me advertising the open application period starting on Monday? And then just, instead of 21 days, I would just extend it out probably another two weeks, so like mid-December is when the deadline would be. That sound reasonable? Okay.
Hold on. We have three hands up at once. Councilmember Lengel was first, and then Councilmember Napland and Councilmember McHenry.
Yeah, I was just going to say that I don't mind an early advertisement. I just want to make sure there's plenty of time for deliberation with all the other work.
Councilmember Napland.
Sorry, I thought you'd called on me. I'm just wondering when the water bill comes out. I can't remember when it arrives. I just want to make sure that people have enough time to open it up and, and look at some people until it's almost due before they open it.
So my deadline is next week, so if you guys, if the council had made a different decision, we wouldn't be able to do it, but the water bill comes out the first of the month. So it'll still provide two weeks via that happening for folks to apply. Councilmember McHenry?
I have the same question, but just to follow up. So the deadline, Jody, I'm sorry, could you say again, the deadline for applying would be December?
I would, I mean, I want to do this right and actually figure out the calculation, and maybe I'll be able to do that while Laura's giving her presentation, but I'm guessing it would probably be somewhere around December 14th or so. I guess I, I need to look at the calendar and kind of count myself backwards and stuff, but somewhere mid-December is what I'm guessing.
Okay, thanks. All right. Anyone else? Okay, not seeing none. I think we have directions, so thank you for that. It'll be good to get that process started early. And now we will go to Ms. Thomas for the administration update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Laura Thomas for the record in Community Development Administration, so I'll do a fairly quick administrative update this evening. Can everybody see the second screen? Okay, perfect. So, oh, I have to move, sorry, I have to move over there. So consultant contracts, we talked a little bit about this at the last admin update. We're going to be bringing forward contracts starting at the next meeting. The majority of it will come in December, but we have a couple that need to be approved a little bit more quickly because we have more development coming in, and we're out of capacity on a couple of contracts. Our Assistant Planner Permit Specialist, we're doing background checks right now, so we're really excited about that. And the finance position, our new employee starts on the 16th, so we're super excited about that as well. As many of you know, we issued our ERP, and that's our enterprise requirements for our planning, for our software. So we're super excited, and look, we had 50 firms pull that the ERP, so we're real excited about that. We've received some preliminary salary data. They've provided that to administration last week, so we're going through that data. When we get a report, we'll get that to council and to our unions. The solid waste contract is going to have its first touch at the 1117 meeting, so that's the next meeting. I wanted to thank Planning Commission and the mayor and council for having the joint meeting last week to look at the Rio Vista Park. That worked out really well, and Planning Commission was really excited to have council. I heard some feedback, so again, thank you for doing those joint meetings. It's been really hard this year because of COVID. So I think we'll probably do another one late winter as well, especially as we're going into some comprehensive planning and some other policy work, which includes another topic that I have for you. Development review is still really busy. You saw that I sent an email out to council and the mayor and Planning Commission. We're at about 105 residential permits for the year, so that's fair, that's pretty close to our record. And we estimate that we'll probably issue another 20 to 30 permits before the end of the year, so it's busy. We had two pre-applications last week, one for residential development, one for commercial development, and then we had a general information meeting for a mixed-use development and a commercial development. So it's pretty, it's pretty busy. We are getting ready to issue some notice of complete applications. We've already issued the one for 145th Street Village, and we're getting ready to issue the Willow Ridge one early next week. We're completing our internal review for the Rio Vista Park. I did send an email to Planning Commission and council, so anybody that has some remaining questions or comments that you want addressed for that city park, tomorrow is the deadline to get those to me, so I really do appreciate the comments, so thank you, and I've received a couple already. As you know, we are working towards the King County Growth Target. We have a meeting next week that's coming up, and that's, that will be when we're in our caucus with our cities that are like us. We also are anticipating the growth capacity report. Larissa, who's our, who's the technical staff with me to go to these meetings, we met with King County staff this week to talk about assumptions, floor ratios, net density and acreage. They wanted a confirmation of data, and so we've completed that task. We have one more email that we need to get them on some floor ratio information, but it's really nice to be able to put a face to the county staff that's doing some of that work. I think that report will probably come out sometime mid or late December, so stay tuned because we'll, we'll talk about that. Actually, Jody, you talked about the appointment process. And the Mayor announced the twenty fifty plan was approved. So that's a pretty quick review. Are there any questions?
Councilmember Lingle?
A quick question on the growth targets. Is there any chance that since we won't get that, that information probably till mid-December? And budget will probably be done or close to done by then. Is there any chance that in some manner we could get your best guess numbers before then?
I honestly, I don't know. There, the, the cart is a little bit before the horse for the county. We'd really like to have the capacity study completed before we start having this discussion. I'm really hesitant, honestly, to come to council until I have good information from the county and have a better understanding of what their expectations are of the city. But I was, it was very promising that we were contacted to go over at least the information that we supplied them. Although this is November and that I would have expected that phone call or email maybe about three to four months ago. They are on a really tight schedule. I do have concerns. The group that I am with has over twenty cities in it. And I don't want to be in a position where there's four or five cities that are gregarious and are really trying to to decide for themselves what their capacity number is. We only have so many units that are going to be allocated to this group. And the county has given us an estimated number, although that was tentative. And they're going back and relooking at it after they talked to all the cities based on the capacity analysis. So I've recommended to the county that they actually take cities that that want to have further and more robust conversations and more residential units to take them and put them aside. So the rest of us as cities that are looking at more modest growth to 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 just get through that process and not have three or four meetings where we're a small voice. And so I'm being pretty honest with you guys. It's gonna be a pretty challenging process to go through, especially if they are determining that we have to make a decision by the end of January, which I'm not sure how realistic that is. So I'm not yet really prepared to come to council because I need to better understand where their numbers are coming from. And I just wouldn't feel comfortable presenting something that I don't know how to explain. And I actually talked to the Mayor about this over the last couple of weeks. I think I'll have a better gauge next week. And I've requested a meeting with the county representative to go over the assumptions of where they're getting numbers from, since we don't have the capacity analysis to look at. I know that was really long-winded, but I thought it was important.
Can I have a follow-up question?
Let's get to see if anyone else has questions first. Does anyone else have any other questions for Laura? Okay, go ahead, council member.
Okay, thanks. My follow-up question is, what I remember about the old comm plan was that our land use analysis for land capacity was very good. And and I have a great deal of confidence of our staff work. Is any of that information, aside from what the county might be thinking? Is any of that information potentially available to council sooner? So we have an idea of at least where our staff estimates are? Or would that still be potentially not a problem for you necessarily, but wiser to wait?
So our previous information is based on the previous capacity, the previous county capacity. And we have to use the the county model because that's what gives us the number. So I need to understand what their numbers are and where they got them from. I can explain what our model is, but they use different assumptions. So I'll just give you an example of one. They use a net density versus we have historically used a gross density up until recently where we've done, I'll call it a baby step in net density, where we take out the critical areas. But when the county does its capacity analysis, it takes out right-ofways and public spaces and stormwater. So when you look at the report, for example, say in our, in our R twelve zone, you know, we're based on our net density and say there was a little bit of wetland. We might be getting, you know, eight or nine units per acre. But the county looks at it because they use an across-the-board for all cities where they might say that we're getting twelve point three units per acre because they look at it differently. And that's how they've always done that. If you go back and look at the previous capacity analysis, that's the way they do it. So what they try to do is go in and get information from the city. And I I did ask the county, I said, you know, do you, or you know, there are other cities that use, you know, that have different density calculations. And they said yes. And so I asked them honestly, did they have any concerns about our, you know, how we look at density? And they, they, they said no, not at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Thomas.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on, we do not have any presentations this evening, but we do have public hearings. The first public hearing is our statutory required first public hearing on the City of Duval twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two biennial budget. And I will hereby open the public hearing. Our director will give a presentation. And if anybody wants to submit a comment for the public hearing, you'll have that opportunity when she is done. Ms. Mason? Run mute.
Good evening, Council. Mayor Dana Mason, Finance Director. Let me share my screen. Okay, can everyone see that? Okay, the regular? All right. Okay, so the agenda for this evening is just an overview of the biennial budget. We'll talk about capital, the different types of expenses in the budget, salaries, wages, benefits, service transfers, interfund services, supplies, debt services, and then the big picture. So the proposed budget includes just over forty-nine million dollars in expenditures, which is about a seventeen point nine million dollar increase over the prior biennium. Thirty percent of the budget is proposed for capital outlay or capital expenditures, twenty-six for salaries and benefits, twenty-one percent for services, twelve percent for transfers to other funds, approximately four percent for interfund charges for services, four percent for supplies, and three percent for debt services. Changes since the last meeting include a reduction in storm, water and sewer charges for services from five point five percent to four percent, which decreased the utility tax expenditure in those funds. And so, and also reduced the cost of the water purchase by the same percentage. Efforts include the fuel expenditure in the equipment replacement fund, which was left out. An increase to jail expenditures to reflect the changes in the interlocal agreement with the city of Izuaqua. A small adjustment to medical benefits and a reallocation of the property tax levy, which increased the transfer from the general fund to the IT fund. So the proposed budget, like I said, is about seventeen million dollars higher than the amended budget. And it's primarily due to an increase in capital outlay transfers out in services. And we'll talk about the drivers of the increase on the following pages. Sorry, there we go. So the budget's approximately nine point four million more than the amount budgeted in the prior biennium. About half of the proposed capital expenditures fall under the street category, followed about by twenty-nine percent budgeted for the water capital improvements. And then sewer improvements fall into third place with about seven percent. And Steve is probably going to go over these. Our director, Director Steve, I'll just call him that. But, okay, so transportation benefit. Three of the seven point five million dollars proposed in the street for street projects are funded with transportation benefit district funds. There are two projects in the Street CIP Fund, the Third Avenue Northeast Roadway and Sidewalk Improvements project, which is funded with REIT one and two, street impact fees, and hopefully a TIB grant. And then the one hundred and forty-second sidewalk extension, which is funded with REIT two, a community development block grant and street impact fees. And then the budget also includes funding for the Main Street and all construction and beautification. And that is funded with bond proceeds. Four point two seven five million is proposed in water projects. And that includes three hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars for a meter reading system in the operating fund. And then three projects in the Water CIP Fund. The the projects are funded with water charges for services that would be transferred in from the operating fund to the Water CIP Fund and then general facility charges from new development. Proposed, the sewer operating fund has four proposed projects, which make up about six hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars of the almost one point one budgeted for sewer improvements. And then four hundred thousand for one project in this sewer CIP fund. And then at the the meeting earlier, we talked about the proposed capital facility projects. There's six hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the expansion of the wastewater treatment plant to house building, planning and public works staff. Hundred and six thousand for four improvements to the city hall. And a hundred and four thousand for improvements to the police department. And staff proposes using bonds, bond proceeds remaining from the Main Street improvement projects to fund the bulk of these projects. Eighty thousand of the four hundred and thirty-five thousand proposed for the storm drainage capital improvements is for two projects in the straight storm drainage operating fund. And then there's three hundred and fifty-five thousand for two projects in the storm drainage CIP fund. The budget also includes twenty thousand dollars for Boy Scout projects funded out of the REIT fund or the REIT two fund. And then a hundred and thirty thousand dollars for park improvements in the Parks CIP Fund, which would be paid for with a combination of park impact fees and park levy funds. And then other capital outlay includes thirty-three thousand dollars for a vehicle for the Building and Permitting Department. Three hundred and a hundred and thirty-five thousand to replace two mowers, a crack seal machine, and two trucks in the Public Works Department, and then a hundred and seven thousand to replace two police vehicles. And then the budget also includes two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for the implementation cost of a new financial and permitting software. So we'll move on to salary and wages. So two point eight million is budgeted for salary and benefits for the biennium. It's about a one point four million or twelve point four percent increase over the prior biennium. There's a four percent increase in medical budgeted for twenty twenty one. And then a zero point seven increase budgeted for PERS or the retirement system. And then in twenty twenty-two, there's a six percent increase budgeted for medical and the same budget for the PERS increase. And the chart that's here just kind of show the FTE count over the years. And the city of Duval, you know, obviously it's not apples to apples because this is thousands. And it's, you can kind of see the dip here in two thousand and fourteen where the city lost two police officers. So their their count went, went down by two. And then we've slowly been kind of building up over the years. The budget includes an increase. So the, yeah, so the budget includes an increase of a one point three FTEs in twenty twenty one. And then an additional two FTDs in twenty twenty-two. And then the counts in two thousand and nineteen and twenty include two positions that remain unfilled. So that those counts have been moved over to the next biennium or to this biennium. So as noticed on the last slide, the proposed budget kept two budgeted but unfilled positions in twenty, from twenty nineteen and twenty twenty, a parks maintenance one, and then a wastewater treatment plant maintenance one. And then it adds maintenance worker one in twenty twenty-two and two positions, a city administrator and an administrative assistant in twenty twenty-two. So the maintenance worker, the additional maintenance worker would be dedicated to the water utility. And it's just part of the plan to staff the utility as recommended by consultants who are working on this city's water comprehensive plan. And then the city has been without a city administrator since two thousand and nineteen. And it's needed to help the Mayor provide guidance to departments and also to serve partially as the city's HR department. Then the admin assistant one would be an entry-level position, answering phones, receiving payments, helping those who walk into city hall. And that would be the current admin assistant to do other things. Changes to existing positions. The proposed changes are needed basically for staff who have excelled in their current positions or are willing to take on responsibilities, needed responsibilities. So there's changes to existing positions that are proposed, proposed are assistant city engineer to city engineer, admin assistant two to admin assistant three, one of our main workers, ones to main worker two, the building inspector to a building inspector, inspector slash plans examiner. That would be a, an eighty-twenty split in twenty twenty-two. And then also in twenty twenty-two, permit specialist one to permit specialist two. And then the city also has some employees right now that are currently working in an interim capacity. The building official, so we would like to make him the building official. We have an accounting associate who's been performing the duties of the accountant. And then we also have a billing utility clerk who's been doing, on top of all of her utility billing duties, she's also been doing accounts payable. And so we'll move on to services. So services, the proposed budget is ten point four million for the biennium, which is a two point five million increase over the prior biennium. The bulk of the increase comes from the way that the city is required to report school impact fees, which used to not have to be reported. They were reported in a deposit fund. So there's also an offsetting revenue. The budget also has some one-time services for interim city administrator in two thousand and one. And then also a city administrator search services, eighty thousand dollars for a contracted policy analyst, analyst, twenty-five thousand dollars for a comprehensive emergency plan update. And then twenty-five thousand dollars in two thousand and twenty-two as a starting point for the comm plan. Transfers out, there's five point six million dollars in transferred out proposed for the biennium. And that's an increase of about three point eight million over the prior year. And nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars of the transfers is for, to the debt service fund for debt payments. Four million are transfers to CIP funds for capital improvements. Four hundred and seventy-five or four hundred and fifty-seven thousand are for operations transfers either from the general fund to the street Big Rock or Ballpark or Sensitive Areas Fund or to other funds to help pay the general fund for overhead costs. And then finally, there's a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar transfer from the general fund to the Information Technology Fund for IT improvements. Interfund services are budgeted at one point million for the biennium. And that's an increase of about four hundred and ninety-one million dollars. The city has three internal service funds, the Equipment Replacement Fund, Information Technology Fund, and the Facilities Fund. And they provide services throughout the city. And they're funded by charges allocated to departments to pay for those services. to pay for those services. So the equipment replacement fund has a budget of seven hundred and seventeen thousand dollars and the two point two point six million dollars in future costs for equipment are allocated to departments over the lifetime of the equipment. And so we're slowly building that fund to help build up a base to cover all of those replacement costs. And then there's also repair and maintenance to existing vehicles in this fund. The information technology fund is having, is charging departments seven hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. And that's due, that is an increase over prior years mainly for an increase to contracted services. And then also there's an increase in software maintenance costs. With the new implementation or the new software that's proposed. And then the building maintenance fund is at two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars budgeted for the biennium. And capital projects, as we talked earlier today, has been, have been moved to the facilities CIP fund. And then the repair and maintenance services basically remain unchanged. And then just two more to go, supplies, two hundred million is budgeted for the biennium. That's about an increase of two hundred thousand over the prior biennium. And that's mainly due to water purchases because of the increase in new development. And then the debt service fund, there's one point seven million dollars budgeted, which is about twenty-five thousand more than the prior biennium. And four hundred and fifty-three thousand of that is for the Big Rock ball fields. That's paid for with levy lift proceeds. Four hundred and eighty-six thousand is for Main Street improvements. And the debt associated with Main Street improvements. Thirty-six thousand is for the dump truck loan. And then six hundred and eighty-two thousand is for the wastewater treatment plant loan. And this is just kind of the big picture. I know it's really hard and squishy, but the overall all budget, proposed budget as it stands, it decreases overall fund balance by about one point eight million dollars. And it's primarily from spending down CIP funds for CIP projects. And then just real quickly, here's the budget timeline. So here we are, budget, public hearing number one. We have a public hearing number two set for November seventeenth. And then we hope to adopt the budget on December first. And that's it. So are there any questions?
So thank you, Ms. Mason. Yeah, I believe we did have one public comment come in through the clerk. Were you going to read that or was the clerk going to enter it into the record? We had one, one public comment on the budget.
Yeah, I can, I can do it, Dana.
Thank you.
I don't think she's here. No, she's not. So Lisa Jaeger, the director of the Snoqualmie Senior Center. This was a public comment that was received via email and forwarded to council. For the public record, it is dated November second, two thousand and twenty. Dear Mayor O'Callander and Duval City Council members, this Sno Valley Senior Center recognizes and appreciates the ways you have reached out to us as service partners to ask and share information to help community members find needed resources and to offer additional funds through the COVID cares funds. I want you to know now, want you to know that now more than ever nonprofits have an important role to play during this pandemic, which is predicted to go well into two thousand and twenty-one. Senior citizens have been most impacted by COVID nineteen, especially those in rural areas like the Snoqualmie Valley. We recognize that you have difficult budget decisions to make, but request that you keep your human services funds at the same level or increased for the next biennium. Help us keep serving our older adults and the most vulnerable in two thousand and twenty-one. The challenge facing Snoqualmie, Sno Valley Senior Center is that COVID nineteen has impacted older adults more than any other population. It isolates and diminishes. The solution we propose is to provide increased outreach to bring a sense of belonging and community so we can all better enjoy physical and mental health even in the midst of a pandemic. It goes on to say what the Sno Valley Senior Center is doing during COVID nineteen. We serve over one thousand older adults in the Snoqualmie Valley every year. We serve over seventeen hundred fifty made from scratch meals each month. Meals are important for physical and mental health, so we include puzzles, information and notes of encouragement. We average more than sixty meals a day. We make over one hundred wellness calls each month to check on and encourage each other. We offer dozens of virtual Zoom classes on fitness, education, art and health, along with training, along with training, how to use Zoom or call in. We offered free or low cost, one-on-one health appointments for reflexology, flu shots, faster naturopathic medicine and dental clinic. Mental health support is also available through the wellness checks, support groups and one-on-one counseling. The result is healthier, happier lives through connection with community, friendships formed and healthier lives. If we all pitch in together, we will receive, we will achieve our shared goals. Together, we have built a strong, resilient community. Together, we can meet our neighbors where they are, pitch in to reinforce strengths and build skills and provide opportunities. We request, we request ten thousand dollars from the two thousand and twenty-one budget. Thank you for all you do for our community through your public service. Yours in partnership, Lisa Jaeger.
Thank you, clerk. And since this is a public hearing, if there's any of the participants that are online that would like to comment on the budget, now would be the time. So simply just unmute yourself and provide your name and address and you're available, you'll be allowed to speak. I'm not seeing anyone unmute themselves. Give it just another second here. Okay, and with that, the public hearing is closed. And of course, Ms. Mason, questions come, you know, when we get to the budget discussion later on. And that's mainly for the people, the public on the line, to let you know that that's, that's where it happens. So the next public hearing is on the resolution for the clearing grade fee. And with that, I will open the public hearing and Director Lenashevsky, please take the lead.
Good evening, Mayor, Council and citizens. Steve Lenashevsky, Public Works. So for consideration tonight for public hearing, we have the update to the clearing and clearing grade permit fee schedule, clear and grading permit fee schedule. This has not been conducted in many, many years. We have had several meetings to discuss the approach. The finance side of this, the charges and went work on going over numbers and providing hopefully clarified and more consistent with the times fees for clear and grade. We've clarified establishing a plan fee, a grading permit fee. These fees are subject to five percent information technology service charge. And they also are relative to other miscellaneous inspection fees that we have adopted under a schedule. We do intend to provide this fee annually be adjusted commensurate with other fees of this type as described in the ordinance. At this time, the fee table is probably a little too big to fit on one screen. And it has been provided in the packet, so I would just recommend that we open up the public hearing because the details are in the packet and it is very difficult to see online.
Thank you. And do we, clerk, did we receive any public comment via email prior to tonight's hearing?
We did not.
Okay, thank you. And same process for the participants on the line as to the budget. So any, anyone that would like to make public comment on this is welcome to at this time. And then you would just unmute yourself. I'm not seeing any, so I will go ahead and close the public hearing. And this will be on our unfinished business later on in the agenda. So under new business, first one is Agenda Bill AB twenty dash ninety-seven A, confirm Mayor O'Callander's appointment of Mike Ontko to the Duval Planning Commission, Position One, a vacant four-year term ending twelve thirty-one twenty-two for discussion and/or decision. And it does not look like Mr. Ontko is here, so I'd be happy to entertain a motion. Councilmember Napland.
I just realized, do you need a motion before we ask questions?
You can do it either way. It's discussion or decision, so you can do it either way.
It's, it's really not a question. I don't really know very much information about the two applicants. And in the past, I thought in the packet, we had received just some, you know, like their application so we could learn a little bit about them. I, you know, I'm not questioning your appointment. I'm just curious. I'd like to get to know, you know, who are our new planning commissioners or who are you proposing to appoint for the new planning commissioners? So I don't know if that's something that we could get afterwards, just so we can learn a little bit.
Absolutely. Normally it is included in the packet, so our apologies for that oversight.
Thanks.
Councilmember Lingle.
Here, okay, I'm unmuted. I guess I want to support Councilmember Napland's comment. I really, I mean, these people may be perfectly fine, but I have absolutely nothing to base a vote on here. And that leaves me uncomfortable. I don't know. I mean, I know the staff wants these appointed. I don't quite know, you know, what decision in the planning commission is vulnerable without the appointments. We are meeting every week now, but I really would like to know something about these people if I'm going to vote on the two agenda bills and I'll leave it at that.
You know, that's fair. I did not realize that those were not included in the packet. And so if we have council members that are uncomfortable, they have gone through a vetting process. And I can say Mr. Young actually previously applied. So it's not his first go around with trying to get on the planning commission, but we could, unless Laura, Ms. Thomas needs them at the next planning commission, we could go ahead and do the appointments. I don't have any issues with that unless there's a timing issue for planning.
There's no issue for the planning commission. We do have some public, we do have a public hearing coming up for the floodplain policy, but we're going to meet with both members to get them up, get them up and running before they hit the ground. I don't know if you remember last week, Mike, which is one of the gentlemen that's up for the seat, attended the joint workshop and I announced his name. My apologies for not making sure that their applications were in the packet. I didn't realize that they weren't in the packet. So I do, mayor, believe that we should pull it until the next meeting.
And I'm perfectly fine and supportive of that. If council, is there consensus or do people want to move forward? I'm seeing ahead none. So, okay, we'll just go ahead and move these items to the next agenda. And clerk, as soon as this meeting is over, if you could get out those applications, that would be great. Moving on to Agenda Bill twenty-nine A, interlocal agreement with Riverview School District for full-time school resource officer for discussion. Chief Hert.
Thanks, Mayor and Council. Let me share my screen real quick. Bear with me. This one, a police chief and not an IT. Okay, thank you, Mayor and Council. So this is the first touch. We did discuss this last year with council. The recommendation at this time, you know, this is, this is for review and discussion. At a future meeting, Stopwood is recommending that you authorize the mayor to sign an interlocal agreement for law enforcement services between the city and Riverview School District for the two thousand and twenty, twenty-one and two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school years. Since you've received this, there are a few changes. The, our city attorney has completed review and I'll talk about that in a little bit, but I did want to talk about real quick the key facts and information summary for the public that may not be aware. Recognizing the added value for having a sworn law enforcement officer at Cedar Crest High School, the city of Duval, with support from its mayor and city council, adopted a resolution to place a levy on the November sixth, November eighth, two thousand and sixteen ballot, asking the voters to levy property taxes to provide full-time school resource officer services for Cedar Crest High School. That levy was ratified by a voter majority in two thousand and sixteen for a nine, a period of nine years, beginning in two thousand and seventeen and ending in two thousand and twenty-five. Through the interlocal agreement, the Riverview School District and city of Duval will work cooperatively and proactively to address school security issues and to provide student staff and patrons of quality law enforcement services and the safest learning environment possible. When we spoke last year, a couple of the, a couple of the concerns from council was to make sure that we addressed not only how much levy funding was being provided each year, but also address any additional expenses that may come up. So that's, that's what the second, or this last portion is. And it basically just says, should additional items of equipment become necessary outside the original scope of this agreement? And as required, to continue and or provide increased safety and efficiency, efficiency of the SRO program, including the safety of students and staff and patrons of the school district. The cost shall be discussed between the superintendent and chief of police and with their budgeting authorities, which is the city council, as needed to determine how these costs will be fared. So I want to bring up another document here. Stop sharing that. Sorry. And I just wanted to show you a couple of changes from what you, you received in your pocket. And these were at the recommendation of our city attorney. The highlighted yellow are actual changes. And if, Daniel, if you wanted to speak, please, please do so. I would just point out there was only two recommended changes by our city attorney. The first one is under purpose. The language has been changed to the purpose of this agreement is to staff a city of Duval police officer at Cedar Crest High School to serve as a full-time school resource officer. And then we will go down to almost the last page, I think. Under indemnification, just a small language change that addresses any property damage of any kind arising from or in any manner connected. The language was changed with the performance of this agreement. Did you want to speak to any of that, Daniel? Hearing none.
Daniel, we can't hear you. It doesn't look like you're on mute, but we can't hear you.
Okay, if he, if he comes on, we'll go to him. But I did want to point out under nine, under financial, this is where the levy dollars were put into the ILA. The current year shows a hundred and twenty-eight thousand, nine hundred and two dollars in levy funding. It's, it's projected at a hundred and thirty-two thousand, two hundred and seventy dollars for two thousand and twenty-one and a hundred and thirty-six thousand, fifty-two dollars for two thousand and twenty-two.
It looks like we do have Daniel back and he's on mute, so it looks, hopefully this time it'll work. It is not. You might have to unplug your headphones and just speak into the computer. I've had that happen a few times.
I will certainly take any questions from council this time in, in hopes that Dan- I will certainly take any questions from council this time, in hopes that Daniel can come on. Councilmember Napland, sorry.
I maybe didn't read closely enough, but I, this went through the Public Safety Committee. Is that correct?
It did go through the Public Safety Committee twice, with their recommendation to move this forward to council for discussion at council of the whole.
That's great. I, I think that, I'm so glad we're doing committees. It makes me feel, I didn't read every single word, and I was hoping that it had gone through that review. The only thing that kind of caught my attention when you were reading it just now, is I, I feel like I recall seeing something in other agreements where, in addition to equipment, if there was some specialized training that the school wanted, or that they thought was necessary, that, you know, there would be some kind of cost reimbursement for that. I don't know. I just thought I'd throw that out there. I feel like I have seen that in some other agreements.
I don't think that's uncommon. And if that's the direction that the council would like to go, I can certainly work with their city attorney and talk to Dr. Smith about what that looks like. I don't think it's uncommon, and it may fit very well under the section that I had highlighted in yellow on the other document, any, any additional expenses, I think that would apply.
Yeah, I, the only reason I would say that is, you know, I brought up before that often these agreements are a little bit more of a cost sharing versus a city paying, you know, the entire cost of it. And I hope we talk about that when the levy expires potentially. In the meantime, I'm just curious, during coronavirus, how are we utilizing our SRO? And what about the other halftime? I'm just curious if we'll see another agreement come forward for that other halftime, or even how that works during coronavirus, when there's no school.
Sure, I am so glad you asked. This is what we are currently doing with our full-time levy-funded school resource officer. I won't bore you and read it, but I will certainly give you a few minutes to read it yourselves, and ask any questions you may have.
Yeah, I'm completely fine. If you just wanted to email, email this to me. I'm just curious. I, I have a feeling that you don't have him just sitting around doing nothing. So I have great confidence you're keeping him busy. I was just curious.
No, quite honestly, a majority of his time right now is working patrol shifts, but, but still maintaining necessary contact and relations with the school. And the second part, your second question was the part-time. That, that will be coming to you on the 17th.
Great. And I see that Daniel has called in as well. So maybe, maybe this time his audio will work.
So third time's the charm. I'm on my phone. You can hear me. Okay, good. Okay, well, sorry about that. I don't know what's going on with my computer. But I, after all of that buildup, I didn't have anything to add. Fairly straightforward revisions there on my end. So, yeah.
All right. Thank you. Any other council questions or comments on this? Mayor Portem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. As Chair of our Public Safety Committee, I did want to say that we did indeed meet and talk on several, twice at least, on this topic with Police Administration. We have such a great relationship with the school district. We were really warmed by the fact that with a lot of questions that some cities have about having an SRO, our school district, parents are very excited about continuing this program, which I think says a lot about our Police Department, how they interact. Even with the part-time, you know, the school district continues to put money into it. And even though, you know, it's not as active, which I think tells you the kind of commitment they have, that they're providing funding for, for some of this, without actually having them as involved. So to me, these are, both of these are something that we've developed over the years. I appreciate the chief answering a lot of the questions we had from the past, making adjustment in the language, meeting with Dr. Smith, more than once to just be able to talk through these. And, and they seem to be real collaborative and reached agreement pretty quickly. The process, I think, has been outstanding.
Thank you, Mayor Portem. Anyone else? Chief Hurt?
No, thank you, Mayor Portem. I just wanted to add that, you know, another discussion we had at the Public Safety Committee recently was, you know, just the lack of opportunity for police to engage community right now, and give them an update of what we're doing, like, like we used to be able to do. So the rec, especially when it comes to SRO, I think there's a, there's a lot of, what word am I looking for? Just, just, people really don't know why we have an SRO, I think, and what we're there to do at the high school. So at, as a, as a recommendation from the Public Safety Committee, police has, we have drafted a two-page newsletter that will go out into, in the utility billing for December, to kind of give the community an update of what we've been doing for the last nine months, and kind of really hit home what the importance of the SRO, and what that role really means for the community. So that will be coming in your utility billing. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Lingle.
That's really good news that you're going to do something in the utility bill. It, has the school district ever taken something like that and gotten it out through its PTAs or other distribution methods throughout the community? They certainly have a, a good communications network to get that information out, too. I was curious about that. And then the other question to the point about specialized training, although I don't know if this is really specialized, is, I'm curious to what degree our SRO may have received or had the opportunity to receive additional mental health training that is, you know, even more tailored to youth. I had never heard that really discussed in our deliberations. I have heard, you know, that talked about it as a need in the, in the community. And of course, we've had some real tragedies. So that is my two questions.
So to answer your first question, I'm not sure what the, what the school district does as far as sending information out about this, but I will certainly have a conversation with Dr. Smith. I agree with you. They have a very wide-reaching audience, and they can certainly push this out a lot farther than we can. Regarding mental health, all of, all of our staff at the Police Department go through that, those trainings, specialized trainings, especially for SRO, when it comes to, you know, internet, internet safety with kids and those types of things. But we don't get a lot involved. We don't want to cross that line between being a police officer and a counselor. So we certainly don't want to give the, the impression that we're, our school resource officer is getting specialized training to act as a counselor at the high school. I think that's, that's a certainly something that's needed, but it needs to be addressed at the district level, and, you know, in cooperation with the city. But we're not going to get into a situation where we have officers acting as counselors.
Of course. Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? All right. So it looks like we'll look to get some additional language to Councilmember Napland's point about making sure those expenses are covered in the contract, and bring it back. And when we bring it back, if that's the only change, is council ready to make a decision on it? I'm seeing a couple of head nods. All right. We'll bring it back, that change, and then get it approved. So moving on, for discussion-only Agenda Bill 20-108, Ordinance 2021-22, Biannual Budget Discussion with Finance, I just want to remind council that we moved the budget discussion that was not finished during committee of the whole to after unfinished business here. So if you would want to discuss this ordinance more now, that is just fine, or we can move it to the end of the agenda. Is there any preference? So if we're not getting any preference, I'm going to suggest just going ahead and discussing with our budget presentations at the end of the agenda, to keep it all in one. So then we'll go ahead and move on to unfinished business, Agenda Bill 20-90B, Ordinance 2021 Property Tax Levy for Discussion.
Good evening, council. In there. Let me share my screen real quickly. Okay, so this is just the property tax, and is proposing a 1% increase, which would increase from the prior year levy, it would increase, the 1% would bring the city $17,896. The city would also receive from new construction and development, $73,569, 3,331 for re-leveied funds. And then there's also in the ordinance, leeway for additional construction or state shared utilities of $20,000. So the proposed property tax levy is $2,053,343. And just real quickly, the levy is used for general fund operations, street fund operations. And then there's a portion removed for the levy left that we've discussed earlier, that expires in 2025. It's used for Big Rock Ballpark debt, the school resource officer, and IT improvements, in that order. And that is all I have. Does anyone have any questions?
I'm not seeing any questions, or are you sure? We usually have a lot of discussion on this one. I think now, after a few years of folks being on council, people understand where it's going. So I guess we don't have any, and I guess that's a good thing. All right. So moving on to Agenda Bill 20-92B, Resolution for Big Rock Ballfields, Use Policy for Discussion and/or Decision. Mr. Lenishew.
Good evening, City Council. Mayor Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. I was a police scanner online, I'm sorry. So Bitrock Ballfields Use Policy, I hope and trust you check the packet out. I tried to make it clear what the changes were relative to our last discussion. We have worked on, I believe, the remaining item was late fees. And I provided some information. And then I think there was also questions on relative average revenues, broken out by user types. So try to understand maybe what those, what the users are, who's kind of a high user, and then should these be levied against anybody for late payment, what they might be. But I think we came to the conclusion that the fee type was going to be capped, in the sense that, I'm trying to scroll to it, 10% late fee shall be owing, or a flat fee of $70, whichever is lesser. So that is six of the policy document. The grant support, we tried to have quality information, so to speak, listed on this, not giving any sort of leverage to any group, but we were always looking to partner, and the policy can be changed in, in the future for many reasons. But that is just acknowledging that we have had grant support from the user groups in the past, and it's just something to be cognizant of in the future. Again, not giving any special interest or any credits or discounts relative to this policy, but just should something come down the road, there is acknowledgement of that on the document itself. Were there any follow-up questions on the, on the policy as provided in the packet, or not?
And that's Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, I don't know this is the right place to bring it up, but I know that with, we've heard from some of the groups that, you know, they have fewer, because of COVID-19, they have fewer folks participating, which reduce the amount that they have to help spend for parks. And we've heard some suggesting that there might be something we can do as a city. It would reduce our revenues, but something we could do to help reduce those costs, you know, maybe, you know, over the next six months or so. Just recognizing that the virus is here, those groups have less money coming in, less money to spend. But we, as a city, want to continue to encourage youth activities. Like I say, I don't know, this, this is the place, you know, this is an overall policy, and maybe that's a separate discussion. But could you touch base on that briefly, and say, do we, as council, have an opportunity to see if we couldn't reduce some of those during this pandemic?
Yeah, I certainly would, you know, support a different agenda item. I don't think it's germane to this topic, but I think having that discussion, we do have a user fee schedule that is adopted by resolution. That can be discussed, amended at any time. This is certainly relevant to that, and I think a good opportunity. We will be bringing forth fees very soon. We're probably behind already, but our fees do expire at the end of this year on the fee schedule that we have adopted the resolution. So we'll be bringing some fees back in the next few meetings. So we'll, we'll have those to consider. And again, at any time, I can work with, you know, admin and clerk's office on a resolution that was passed, if there's, you know, somebody wants to, you know, bring up a change to that, or the interim, we can certainly, you know, facilitate that.
Good. In terms of this policy, I appreciate the updates, and I fully support it. It looks really good.
So with that, if there aren't any further council comments or feedback, is everybody okay with moving this to the next agenda for decision? Otherwise, you could choose to approve it tonight. Another option would be to put it on consent the next agenda. Councilmember Napland?
I feel pretty comfortable about this. I like the change that was made to the late fee. I feel comfortable moving it to the consent agenda. I don't know if I need to make a formal proposal, or just find out if consensus, but since there weren't any questions, it seems like this might be a good.
Yeah, that's exactly. No formal process, but if I can get head nods, and we can put it on consent. Okay, good. Excellent. So with that, moving on to Agenda Bill 20-84C, Resolution Clear and Grading Permit Fee Update for Discussion and/or Decision. And this is the official third touch. So no rule suspensions, council rule suspensions are needed for that. And that's for discussion and/or decision. Mr. Lenishewski.
Yes. Hello again, Steve Lenishewski, Public Works. I don't believe there were any changes made since the last meeting. We have clarified every item we've discussed, come up with a streamlined, progressive approach that mathematically makes sense as it goes. It is in line with other fees for clear and grading in our area, and similar to several. It is assessed when somebody pulls a clear grade fee, which can be a private citizen, it can be a, you know, a 20-acre subdivision. It's fair and equitable in how it is. Fees are generated. I think it is a vast improvement, as well as clarifying certain things that maybe weren't clear before. So I don't have any further comments. Anybody have any questions on the item?
I'm not seeing any questions. Is council ready to vote on this? And if so, I entertain a motion. Oh, looks like Councilmember Lingle.
I make a motion that we approve Agenda Bill 20-84C.
Mike Remington, second.
All right. We have a motion by Councilmember Lingle, a second by Mayor Portem Remington. Any further discussion? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Please ignore that, that child in the background, if you heard him. All right. Thank you. And then we have one last item of unfinished business tonight, Agenda Bill 20-94A, Toll Brothers Affordable Housing. Ms. Thomas.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm just pulling up the Agenda Bill really quick, hopefully. Sorry, I'm trying to get it. Sorry, I'm trying to get it. And you can see it. So, good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to give a brief update, and this is for the affordable housing item that we've, this is the second formal touch. And at the last council meeting, our former council member, Matthew Iyer, had asked a couple of questions, and it was related to the House Bill fifteen ninety. And then also, if we could have Arch come and talk about their program and opportunities that they could provide with the city. And so I had a meeting with Arch last week, and they will be coming to our next city council meeting under presentation. And so they'll give likely about a ten-minute presentation, and then we'll leave opportunity for us to have a discussion with them as well. And then I did some additional research on House Bill fifteen ninety. And thank you, Councilmember Hoag, you sent me some good information that was happening at SCA as well, so that helped give me a good kickstart. So I did provide the link to the actual bill, so hopefully everybody had a chance to review the bill as well. It wasn't that long, and so it was full of pretty good information. I did kind of a basic summary. I also put a link to some information on municipal research site. So the bill does allow cities and counties to collect a tax either through the vote of the people or through a councilmatic approach. The county, if a county does not impose the full tax rate by nine-thirty, and the city legislative authority located in the county, they could impose the tax. While the county did not adopt their tax before this deadline, I'm not sure if you heard, they did approve it after that date. So stay tuned for that. I know that's caused a little bit of anxiety amongst a couple of communities. So I think there's going to be further discussions. The tax is limited to certain uses, and essentially, it's for programs that are under the sixty percent medium housing index, and it's for new units and construction of mental and behavioral health-related facilities, funding programs and maintenance costs of new affordable housing units and facilities, providing housing programs or newly constructed evaluation and treatment centers. It is pretty limited to what you can use it for. And then there's some additional restrictions as well. So they did open it up for persons with behavioral health disabilities, veterans, senior centers, homes or at risk being homeless, families with children and accompanied homeless youth or adults, persons with disabilities, domestic violence survivors. So that would be sixty percent of those funds, and then forty percent could be used for the operation, delivery, or evaluation of mental and behavioral health and treatment programs related to those housing facilities. There's a lot in this bill, so I probably shouldn't read all of it. But there's also some population thresholds as well for using it. And so it was, it's pretty robust. I think it is pretty complex. I looked to see how many, like, cities and counties have implemented this tax, and King County has, and then a couple, I'm not even sure if it's a handful of cities within King County. Snohomish County hasn't done this yet, and I don't believe any cities have either. But I did, while I was doing the research, they also, I also just put in some additional information since we, there was some interest to know about the housing bill. There's also an affordable housing property tax levy, so I wanted to give you just a little bit of information on that. And then there's also the multifamily tax exemption. We're actually not qualified for that because we don't have a population of fifteen thousand or more residents. So that is the information that I have to date. As I said, Arch will come and have a discussion with us at the next meeting. We have drafted jointly with Toll Brothers some materials that we'll need to be looking at approving here in probably either the next meeting or the first meeting in December. I haven't received any feedback via email yet. And so if you want to have a discussion this evening, we can, or if you want to go back and look at the covenant, you can, and just make contact with me, either email or phone, because I want to try and wrap this covenant up here in the next two meetings, so I can take questions.
I guess I have a question.
Councilmember Lingle?
I just want, I guess I'm just trying to clarify the covenant that you've attached. I haven't compared the one that we had before.
I haven't, I haven't made any changes to the covenant.
Okay, well, I can tell you what one of my comments was on that covenant, which is that I felt like they, there needed to be some explicit language about, I mean, I'm assuming this Arch thing, at least at this point, is specific to the Toll Brothers project. Is that correct?
So we haven't entered into a relationship with Arch. I did provide the MOU so that if we do enter into a relationship, and I did talk to them. I think there are, there is some merit to them assisting us, so I want them to talk to you about it. It is an hourly rate, so when we would need them is probably up at the front end, which would be to look at our covenant. I am, they did invite me to send it to them and give some comments to us for no charge, so I thought that was nice. The covenant that we have is essentially their older Arch covenant. So I think there is opportunity for us to have them look at it. I just don't know about the timing, because the units are, you know, like we'd said, are under construction. So it just depends on which way council wants to go. If you think that you are interested in entering that relationship, then I think that would be helpful to know at the next meeting, because then I would bring forward the MOU to the following meeting, and then also have them look at the covenant. But we are, we are challenged with a timeline.
So, but I do. Oh, sorry, Ms. Thomas, I wasn't, didn't know you weren't finished. Go ahead, and then Councilmember Naplin has a question or comment?
Yeah, I wasn't sure if Dot was, I'm sorry, if Dorothy Lingle, Councilmember Lingle, was finished, because I didn't actually get the language or the question yet from you that you had in the covenant.
Well, when I looked at the materials we had last time, I had several comments. And I did, I don't, I don't remember, I mean, I don't think I went into them in any detail at that meeting. And the, I was hoping that maybe an Arch presentation would simply answer those questions. So maybe what would be best is if I, I don't know, sent you an email or whatever on those questions, and then you could make sure they're in the presentation. Would that be the best way?
I can send you, I do want you to send you, but Arch isn't there to answer questions about the existing covenant, because we're not, we have not entered into an MOU with them. What they're going to do is talk about their program and what they can offer as far as services. But if there's something that you have specifically that you want them to address about their service opportunities in the MOU, then absolutely, I can have them do that. But I don't know that they will or will or can be prepared to do that, because they actually have to go through their board for approval as well.
Okay, so, okay, that answers the MOU question. Then I guess the other thing, you have this timing issue with these. And the question about whether the Arch agreement would actually be in place by the time you need your, our covenant in place. Am I understanding that there, that might be a timing issue?
Yeah, there could be a timing issue. We haven't been requested to go out yet for a final inspection, but I think that will definitely come within the next thirty to forty days.
Okay, so that means that we have to approve a covenant here fairly quickly. If, whether there's an Arch thing in place or not, that's what that means, right?
Yeah, I mean, we, if we approve the covenant within the next thirty days, it will get recorded, and we will not allow any occupancy until there's a covenant. And I'm assuming that Toll Brothers is going to work with us, but at the same time, I think we, you know, we do need to continue to make progress.
Well, the only other thing I would say, saw before, was I thought it was good that Toll Brothers offered the thirty-five years for affordability. I thought that was a very positive thing.
Yeah, told, Arch was very surprised at the length, because usually they're twenty years.
Yep.
Any other council members have questions or comments for Ms. Thomas? Councilmember Naplin?
So I just, you had asked a question about, you know, if we were interested in having them look at the covenant, and if they're offering to do that, absolutely. They're experienced in this type of thing, and I'd love to hear their feedback. I, you know, whether or not we enter into an agreement or want to enter into an agreement, I think that is an important conversation to be had. But if they're willing to take a look at our covenant and share some of the things that they've learned or comments that, you know, could help us, I'd love to see that. I, you know, just seeing frustrations that other communities have had about their affordable housing, just the way the covenants were written is the root of it in most cases. And there have been, you know, a lot of disappointments of people thinking it turned out one way, it turns out, you know. And just from their point of view, as having to administer some of these things, we, I don't want to end up in a situation where managing this ends up costing taxpayers just an extraordinary amount of money because of, you know, maybe we just didn't, you know, realize we could have structured it one way versus another. So absolutely, I would love to get their opinion on it. And I, I like the idea of, you know, possibly using them to help us through the sale process, and it just, it seems like something we have no experience with. So, I mean, depending on the cost of it, I really am curious if they would be willing to help us with that.
Yeah, so the MOU has the, has all the costs in it. But I think that's the question that if I were council, I would ask, is ask them as an example, like, if we have one unit going through this process, how much time does that take? What exactly do you do? So I could ask them to be prepared for that part of the conversation, if that's what you're looking for. And I mean, that's what as staff we're looking.
A real life per unit, what typically it would end up costing to have them help us with that. But absolutely, as soon as you can get, if they're willing to look at that covenant, the sooner we could get it to them and get some comments. That is such a generous offer of theirs, and I would love to take advantage of that.
Yeah, I have, I have sent it to, I haven't received anything back, and they didn't give me a guarantee, but I'm really hopeful. I kind of pleaded our case of, like, you know, we don't have a lot of staff. We'd really appreciate if you could look at it. So I'm hopeful their board, you know, they may have gone back to their board, and their board may say, you know, yes, we'd like to do it, but we have to be in an agreement first. I wouldn't be surprised if they give me a draft sample of what they do, if they, if they weren't able to review our particular covenant. And then I could look at them kind of side by side and see what the difference is. But all, I was going to give them another phone call after this meeting. So I'm getting really good feedback, so I do, I do appreciate it. Thank you, Councilmember Naplin and Councilmember Lingle.
Councilmember Hoag?
Well, I do have experience selling Arch homes, and so I do know how much work that it is on their, on their end of things. And they do provide a really good service, so I, you know, I look, thank you for inviting them to come to our meeting. I appreciate that, so it'd be good.
You can thank Councilmember Iyer, because he's the one that made the request.
Mayor Portem Remington?
Thank you. This is one of those topics I wish I had so much more understanding on. But I, the more I look at it, the more I have questions. I'm so thankful that we have an opportunity to help provide for some low-income housing. I'm always dumbfounded at what low-income housing costs. You know, some of the costs in there just hardly seems low income at all. I always look at what the county can provide, but I just don't believe that some of the services they have really benefit the city itself. We don't have the capacity to manage it. You know, there is a cost with Arch, and so I look forward to hearing from them. And maybe other council members that have better understanding can talk with me away from the meetings to gain even more understanding. But I am thrilled that we're talking about low-income housing. It's one of the key things. I think that if we have any opportunity to help citizens with more affordable housing, we should take that, you know, every chance we get. So if you have more knowledge than I do, I'd love to hear about it, and just try to understand what's the best thing for us to do as a city, and how can we best utilize either our power to work with developers or to do something on our own to increase affordable housing for folks here. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from Ms. Thomas? Okay, seeing none, we will go ahead and move on to the continuation of the budget presentations and discussion from the whole. Mr. Lenishewski?
Eric, did you want to have Dana do the budget item first or after the presentations? The one that you moved from new business?
Let's, I'm considering it kind of wrapped into this, unless, okay. Ms. Mason could confirm if we have a different presentation than we've already had. But yeah, so there's no different presentation, so I think once Mr. Lenishewski is done, we can open up the discussion.
Okay, just wanted to make sure.
All right, well, hello again, Steve Lenishewski Public Works. And I'm happy to say you got the clip notes version from Ms. Mason a short time ago. And then again, to confirm what everybody's seeing, are you seeing one slide, or are you seeing the actual PowerPoint?
Actual PowerPoint.
I believe that did it?
Yep, you're good.
So we had just talked about the standardized facilities list. I don't know if we want to go back and just close the loop on that, but from what staff heard, seems like a great idea. We ought to figure out how we can possibly facilitate doing some of the capital planning first or understanding in conjunction with that. So that's enough information on that. We can talk about that on admin, and then maybe discuss it at the next meeting, or go from there. Any other further comments on that facilities? Did we have enough closure at the last session? Not that anything is immediately done, obviously, tonight, but.
Yeah, I'm not seeing any for tonight, Steve, so we can probably move on and then bring it back to the next one.
And again, Dana did a great job with her overall PowerPoint for the budget proposal. And we'll be moving on to the street CIP. Two major projects, obviously Third Avenue is predicated on a TIB grant. The grant and the board meets November nineteenth and twentieth. They usually announce midday on the last day of their meeting date, so we should know on the twentieth. For both programs, we have entered into preservation, as well as the arterial program for Third Avenue. At that time, I would imagine, if we're not through the budget process, we don't get a grant, we'll make a different path forward than if we do get a grant. So until that time, we are where we are. One forty-second Street sidewalk, that is the extension of the sidewalk that does not exist in front of the Duomo Mobile Home Park, adjacent to Cutter's Glen and to the west heading to two seventy-eight, off of the one forty-second alignment. We are successful candidates for the CBBG grant. That final grant acknowledgement will be, I believe, February or March. Amy McHenry, I'm not sure if you recall, but somewhere in early spring, late winter, I think they finalize the budget.
That sounds about right. That sounds about right.
The Main Street CIP. The remaining parts of that project are the speed feedback signs, so you've all seen those as you drive down the road, your speed is relative to a speed limit sign. And then the rapid flashing crosswalks at one forty-third, one forty-fifth and Valley Street. The majority of that, um, those sites are pre-plumbed for all of the work, there is a little bit of concrete repair. And maybe don't changes that need to occur that are integrated into the project. We do have the project design complete as of today, so we will be bidding that work soon. And that is work that is on the hard surface and can take place anytime in the winter as long as it's not freezing temperatures. So we do plan to bid that work out ASAP and then hopefully come forward with a contract in the next, I don't know, month and a half or two, I would say at the latest. But that would be expended most likely in the twenty-twenty-one timeframe. With fees and funds that were already budgeted and to back up a little too. This was part of the original Main Street South project, but there was some discrepancies and difficulties getting the final channelization and approval plan from Washdaw. So have obtained that after the sidewalk project and are moving forward with that work. Um, the Transportation Benefit District TBD. We are asking for, that's the programming, so typically we will fund overlays associated roadway reconstruction, which would be surface and subgrade preparation of an overlay area. Uh, they are normally in pockets of five, ten feet wide and twenty feet long. Normally, most of our roads aren't fully failing, but there are spots in all roadways that fail, so. All of these associated improvements are just broken out into three categories. Obviously, the overlay is what you see on top, roadway reconstruction would be preparing the subgrade for any overlay work that we would do. And then ADA ramps are associated with the crosswalks to be retrofitted adjacent to the ADA, I'm sorry, overlay projects. I'm wondering if the slides are out of order. Uh, we did go after a grant for project four and one, one is Roni Road, four is Brewett Road or one fifty-second. I'm going to jump slides real quick, don't get carsick. I'm not sure if I slipped a slide or what, but I thought I had the grant table listed. We applied for four hundred and sixty thousand dollars of grant and the TIB can choose to split that. So should we come back with not the four sixty, but let's say half, we will prioritize which project is in worse shape, likely TBD number one. But we'll, we'll cross that bridge when we get there at the end of the month here. So parks, Dana did a great job again skipping over, I tried to make a little bit of a, if you haven't seen the Taylor Park retaining wall, the wall is fairly long, I believe a hundred and fifty feet in overall length. Typically forty feet into the ground, so there are elements of this wall that aren't visual yet from the surface, but we are losing the sloughing area to the south. This is right by the old bathroom corner at Taylor Park. So it is very sandy, loamy soil, does tend to not want to stay, there are plenty of failures and headscarves all throughout the Coke Clemens corridor. This was from this last winter's rain events. So we did remove at our GeoTech's recommendation, some of the trees that did fall and were moved in the land mass. Uh, it is stable, we have been monitoring it, we have cut in some ditches as requested and recommended by the geotechnical engineer to keep water off the surface. It's been matted and we are hoping to allow surface vegetation to remain growing and helps with stability. But the wall is intended, which I, I tried to show, the brown layer would be the failure plane. So, you know, we would excavate down some of the dirt and actually install lagging or four by twelve wall to further support and not increase any failure. And we can do this up to a certain vertical depth, ten to twelve feet. Um, we can go deeper, but we would then have to get into the tieback category and that is where you actually nail in anchors through the wall that exists and into the soil embedment. This would be north side, we do not need to get to that extent yet, but we, we are recommending clean up slope and add some walls in so we don't add to any failures. That's one project on there, typically we have Eagle Scout projects that are somewhat planned, somewhat not. But again, it's always been a resource the city has provided. We normally don't spend hardly any of the money out of that account. A couple thousand is typical and we never fully fund, we've usually either provide half or less of what funds are raised for any specific project by the Eagle Scout. Here landing electrical service is still on the list, Sean is checking in with PSC, they're slow and steady on this. And no sign, no, no end in sight unfortunately. And that one is already amended in the budget, so we're just working forward to resolution on getting that service electrified. Uh, there are some sun shades in the programming for parks. So Jen Park has one as well as Big Rock Play Area. And the Big Rock Play Area is a little bit of a double duty. The Big Rock, sorry, so Jen Park is on there, I have the rock slides, Big Rock itself. The play area is adjacent to first base line at the ball field and with fly balls was contemplated. I think even Alana had our insurance carrier, so yeah, a, a shade is a good idea for protection as well as just shading in our rain screen that is put into the budget as proposed. Uh, the camera system we talked about earlier this year, the hard costs were more, we had ten thousand budgeted. After getting some quotes, it was in the thirty-two to thirty-five thousand dollar range. Uh, I think we talked last meeting about the turf conversion on the third baseline at Big Rock. Helping maintenance and providing some additional warm-up space, not necessarily making it follow the rules of other foods and other eatery types of activities on it when it's not being used for warm-ups, that was a question slash concern. And then some concession improvements. The bathroom that exists, the restroom facility has a concession on the end, we haven't had any luck yet. I think we had some pretty good inroads this spring with Little League and then unfortunately COVID hit. They had tried to design some, some programming on their own to generate their own revenue and get some support for the community. If you do attend, you know, Little League games or other level of baseball games at Clover Parks where there's, you know, three and four diamonds that back each other. They typically have a concession, they raise quite a decent amount of funds by selling, you know, drinks and candy bars and popcorn, so. This is a little bit of seed money to not necessarily do it all, but put something in the budget, knowing we may get something out of it. It's again, in my opinion, just seed money. As far as maybe even being matched where we, we put up it, put up front and then, you know, we would have some group come to council with an agreement and arrangement to either pay it back over time, but just, it's very raw inside, there are shelves and countertops and that's about it, right? There's no racks, there's no, um, nothing really other than, you know, sinks. So it was a thought on trying to get some increased use on that structure in and knowing that the user groups could help fund back the money again as seed money. Okay, so that's parks in general, before I jump into utility, are there any thoughts or questions on any park projects? I see, I can't see everybody, I see one hand.
Councilmember Napland?
I have kind of a silly idea, there, we didn't really have a lot of brainstorming about, you know, things we'd like to see or this or that. So I don't know when the right time is to say it, but, um, I have always thought that it'd be really neat if we had, you know, maybe a disc golf course down at McCormick Park. And the funny thing is, is I, I remember an applicant for city council, I think it might be, um, Elaine, oh, I know her last name and now it's not coming to me, but Elaine Sawyer. I think she brought it up when I was interviewing her at one point. And so I know there's at least two people interested in disc golf in Duval. But the reason I was bringing it up is that it seems like it'd be a fun thing to do and you can social distance while you're playing. And I think what they do is, um, you know, you can just put a sleeve in and, and then, you know, have the disc golf installed or not installed. You know, there's flexibility there because we do use the park for other things, but I just wanted to throw that out there. I, seems kind of like a random idea probably, but, um, I don't know when else to say it.
So Councilmember Napland and I actually talked about that this morning during our meeting and that's one of the things we have heard a bit. Um, I, I don't know that they're too expensive, but we could probably use levy money or something for that. And it would, you know, to Councilmember Napland's point, um, that would be a nice enhancement to our parks if we can do it, um, in at least one of them. So I totally support, um, trying to see if we can fit that into the biennial budget this year. Um, and would definitely love to hear what council thinks about that.
So just touching on that briefly, uh, let's, sometimes Eagle Scouts come to us with very, very bad ideas or none at all. They, again, we, we do have a shortlist, I think this is probably something we could convince, you know, one of these younger fellows to, to get involved in. Um, so one way to do it if we want to try this approach is, uh, maybe we can, I don't want to know. I'll ask, I'll ask Alana because she usually handles these, but they usually reach out to us. I, we could reverse, reach out to the community and say, hey, any Eagle Scout looking for a project? And then see, I just fear how many might call us, I'm not trying to rub my face for any other reason, but I just feel like thirty of them calling, yeah, I'm ready to do my project. And then I just, you know, want to jump, so, um, they're, they are very well intended, um, so far all young men. But sometimes they, they don't have an idea or they have their, they're very, very, very stuck on their own idea, no matter how wrong it is. You know, whether it's a permit and, and design, it's just, it is, uh, interesting. But I, we can go that approach or if we want to try to figure out how to get it done elsewhere, um, that's fine. It, yeah, I think removable ability because of flooding and other activities is a great idea. We might want to see if somebody in the community has an idea, I don't know, I don't know that it could all fit where it is either, Jennifer, because they are. Like, there's, there's some very, very renowned ones in our area, you know, there's one in Shelton that's like, people drive fifty miles to play on this thing, so they are and can be very long and, you know, go through lots of areas. So maybe it can be a short course, but McCormick isn't huge, but yeah, something, I'm, I'm up for putting on the list unless somebody wants to tell us to, you know, find somebody to design one and put one in, but. Open for business, how's that?
I just wanted to bring it up as an idea, I have no idea how everyone else feels.
Great idea.
I like it. What does everyone else think just as the idea, because we can do some more research into it? Councilmember McHenry?
Yeah, same, I, I remember talking to Elaine about this and I also think it's a great idea. It fits in easily into an area, you know, that, without taking over and, and making it unusable. So I just think it's a great thing to try and squeeze in somewhere.
And these are some of these things where it doesn't take a lot, but it does take something funding wise. I did get an email from a citizen too who, I, I just want to get your, your off flavor on this. They're interested in putting, you know, pickleball, pickleball lines on our tennis courts. So I'm not opposed to it, it's a poor time of year to paint lines, of course, but, um, you know, few hundred bucks for a paint machine and paint and we could do that type of work too, just.
Yep.
Nets tend to get destroyed, so there are considerations to be made, but yeah, I don't, look at our, I, I don't see how we could not, because we have so many lines on our ball fields, there's not a, a real bad reason to put more lines on a tennis court, but.
Councilmember Lingle?
Um, listening to this conversation, what occurs to me is in the proposed budget, it's labeled as, as scout projects. And maybe there's a different label we should be looking at, which is sort of small projects, um, a small projects category or small park improvements category as opposed to being so specific that it would be the scouts. As, as, as was mentioned, maybe we'll get a scouts project, maybe not. But having a category for these kinds of ideas, parks ideas, might be a better label. And then if we want to put more money into it or whatever, it's, it's designated appropriately.
Certainly broadens the opportunity.
Yes.
Great. Anyone else?
It's McHenry.
Councilmember McHenry?
I just wanted to respond to the pickleball lines, I think anytime we can enrich or make an area more usable or open to a more, a bigger variety of uses, I think we should do it because we're limited in how much land we have and how many parks we have. So anytime we can diversify with the same area, I think we should try and do it.
Thank you. All right, so it kind of sounds like we've got enough support here to look into it a little more, um, so thank you for that.
Uh, Councilmember Hope, have her hand up?
Oh, I could not see that, thank you, Councilmember Hope?
So, um, there is a, one of those frisbee golf places up in Lake Stevens by one of the, it's by an elementary school up there. And it goes like through the woods and my son used to just keep those discs in the back of his car. And, and I, I know that there's places that he's found, but, um, I think it's a popular thing to do, so I, I think it would get lots of use.
Mayor Portem Remington?
Yeah, I would support the frisbee golf, but we don't have a cow for cow pie bingo, so frisbee golf's my next choice.
All right, and the only one not to speak is Councilmember, but thank you, did you have anything to add?
No, I concur.
All right, thank you, okay.
All right.
Yes, marching through.
So, uh, water and so our CIP, it's fairly robust this year. Some of these are, you know, more construction related, this is more implementation, software, hardware related. So the census flex net system is a product that works and integrates seamlessly with our billing software through census as well as our metering currently deployed. So full communication through the system, um, shrink this screen so I don't have to look left all the time. So yeah, remote turn on, turn off, data query, leak alarms, um, temperatures and other readings, we can program into this system with, uh, other additional, um, metering technologies, customer access, other agencies who do have this are, you know, the, the homeowners get great access to the information. Uh, instantaneous access as well. And the amount of hours, which may seem like a lot, uh, which it is, but shut-ons and show, turn-ons and turn-offs, leak checks and move-ins and moves-out, move-outs when you close a home on a sale. Those are all manual activities right now, so it is, so, you know, Stephanie getting the call, sending the message to the crew, the crew going up at some point in the day that, you know, whatever they had planned, some agencies call on move-ins and move-outs better than others, but normally escrow calls and there's a, a pretty generic, you know, property closing on, you know, ten-five, customer needs to close out. So we have to manually do that work, so like I said, five hundred hours a week, that's certainly over forty hours a month of just basic activity, not even meter reading. Which this will help as well. Uh, we are getting the system, the design is specific on area and technology. So Joe did reach out to the provider to give us another assessment of the city. So it has to do with single string and other area-wide improvements. So this cost is last year's number, late, early this year's number, so we are refurbishing that. Joe did not expect it to go up, he actually was told the technology may go down some. But certainly would be a significant improvement, um, for our meter reading and system interface capabilities. So toll two, we do expect that to be filed, designed this winter and then bid for spring and summer work. Um, this is may, the second main feed we have between the toll and the city, which is off the two seventy fifth alignment between Big Rock Road and the toll. So twenty-eight hundred linear feet to the south. This is, this is currently now our last section of AC pipe and we are ready to say good riddance, knock on wood. And we are ready to say good riddance. Knock on wood, though, our AC pipe. Has been a good batch that we discovered citywide, so that's, that's good news. It is operational and and isn't. Uh, catastrophically failing at this time, but it, it is ready to go and we are ready for it to go. Uh, system wide telemetry, so this is a, I, I tried to make all the numbers. At cost numbers, either A, what is presented in any CIP or B, if we have a new number. Like the system telemetry and then the census flex net system, those are current numbers. So this is a new number from our consultant we got on board earlier this year for system wide telemetry. So, you know, the little screen is just what you would have as a typical interface. Pumps on, pumps off, valves on, turning valves on and off, accessing the valves, filling the tank. Having the programming fill the tank, not having to manually go do all the work, seeing pressures throughout the system. So sensing pressure slows, sampling, system use. Uh, certainly increases reliability and resiliency. We have had a lot of hiccups with the power outage that was three weeks ago. It fumbled up a lot. We are. Need to replace, uh, switch between the trans, sorry, the generator and then the operational pump house. Um, another little motor failed causing the generator overheat, so. We have no way to see any of that without physically going there. And getting a call from citizens normally in the upper zone that say, hey, my pressure is really, really bad or it's kind of dirty right now and my pressure is low. Is there something going on? The good news is people. Bar nine always call, so that is very good news, but you know, after hours, no one's here and we can't. You know, go run and turn the pump on or turn the Tolt on. So it needs to be automated, it needs to be monitored and we need to get eyes on the system, so. It is on our CIP as well. We do intend to bring forward design work and then, you know, bring forward paperwork to get this bit out next year as, as soon as, uh. Practical. This is kind of heavy consultant work too. I know there has been. I will call it concern, but you know, uh, an understanding that it takes time to deploy any project, no matter how big or small. So this is something we will rely heavily on consultants for and those, those professionals to help implement. On the city's behalf. Uh, from the CIP list, the reservoir and project F three and four, so this is inlet and outlet configurations. In our two point two million gallon water tank, so for those who do not know. There's water main in the road that feeds the tank and then pipes come out of the tank, back into the road and then distribute to the system. Those are on a common fill and drain, so if you have, you know, eighteen feet of water, you have the water coming in on the bottom of the tank. Right, press, pressurized water coming in, dense atmosphere, pressure is released because the tank. But then the, the system takes it out and it comes out of the same. Specific area, so you get pockets of water within the tank that aren't mixing, they may be older and they get stagnated, so. This is reconfiguring the inlet and outlet, so you would have different inlet and outlet configuration. Normally it's just after installed piping network inside the tank itself. Uh, it needs an exterior paint job and an interior coating, so it is not quite painting on the inside or just coating to protect the metal from corrosion. All that is, it makes sense to do it all at once. Additional to that pump station improvements, there are th- three pump sets in there now. Two large, one small, so two sixty horse and one thirty. They operate in conjunction with each other or singly. And they alternate based on computer programming. We do that to try to make sure, you know, pump one isn't always on and pump two only comes on when it needs that, and so we, we try to cycle them through. Uh, we do have, one of the drives for pump two is out right now. We have to get that looked at next week. Um, so that is all manual at this time. Uh, but there are four bases for pumps. We do expect to need those pumps all in operation. At the time the Tolt two is refurbished as well as the south end of the Tolt area comes online. In full, so that needs to be certainly in the next three year planning horizon, needs to get implemented and is part of this project. And we would hope to design that. This year, we will be bringing forward a contract for design services for this suite of projects. That number is out of the twenty twelve CIP because that is the only number we have at this time. So first thing would be to scope. What it is in today's dollars before we get too deep into the project and know if we have to. A, split it into more than one project or B, um, you know, maybe we're fine, but. That is in the budget and it currently is afforded at that price, uh, so we need to clear that out a little bit. I guess that's water. Question, comments, thoughts before we go to sewer? Alright, I think I'll take that as.
Not seeing any hands.
The sewer CIP, I did mention at the committee, the whole meeting, some of these elements are stacked within each other. INI is specific. There are three separate projects listed and broken out in the budget package. In the narrative, um, but they really are a program, right, design and implementation. Ally CIP work, you know, prepping for access, public education outreach. And then, of course, the process to begin implementation on a programmatic way. I do not expect the four hundred K to be. Once, but I think as we develop the program and we annualize it, we'll be able to come up with a. You know, a way to get so many feet of pipe done every year on the program that is set in place and Old Town. Is the specific area that is currently at the highest risk and area of known infiltration. We are sitting up. Five. Flow measurement devices in the sewer system to understand rain flow and it's. You know, how immediate its impact is. I think I showed that at the meeting beforehand, regular sewer flow. Then translating the rain amount and rain events on top and seeing how much then comes in, so trying to. Get a couple eyes in the system too early here to see what are the worst areas are. The next steps after, you know, doing Old Town, we would then video and we, we would turn this program into a way of, uh. Still being seeking out INI, but we would be seeking it. The bulk of the system was built. Outside of Old Town, you know, from the eighties and nineties to now, so there water type pipe, water type manhole. Uh, they call them a, a core seal boot, so it's a rubber boot built into the concrete structure that seals the pipe. Yes, the concrete structures themselves can leak, so video inspecting, um. Is going to be big as we move out of Old Town to try to limit the amount of infiltration we get in the system. And I think I remember, or I think I told this group, if not this group, another group, you know, we normally accept about five to six hundred thousand gallons a day in the summer. Put that at one point two million gallons a day in the winter. We obviously know we have rainwater seeping in, because people don't use more sewage in the winter per se. So there are, I'm sure, areas outside of Old Town, but Old Town is the worst offender. It was built in the mid to late seventies. Is concrete pipe, non gasketed, so it's, it's, it was fine at the time, but it still is, uh. Very, very limiting, um, keeping water out, uh, today. And the little image you see below there, cure and place pipe, right? I don't know if anybody has had any experience with this, but literally it is, I can show you how it works, um. Kind of like a nylon sock, it gets blown in and then super hot pressurized water goes in and turns that sock into a resin pipe. So we will build a pipe network inside the existing pipes without digging. There are dig pits, you have to have certain, uh, places in the system, but. Normally you can access manhole to manhole and, uh. Seal your pipe network off and then you go back and you cut in the services and. Pretty exciting stuff, uh, especially as technology has made that kind of a no dig technology. Other improvements, uh, your, your wastewater treatment plant manager is on me like stinking at the plant. To get the UV system upgraded, um, it reminds me constantly, as soon as it dies, we are in non compliance with our permit because it, it is our. Systems way of disinfecting, even though we are, you know, tertiary treatment, um, with the, with the bio. Membrane bio reactor, we do have clean class A rewa- reuse water, but again, our permit says we must. Disinfect and we do disinfect the UV, so that system is twenty five years old. It was, it was in prior to the upgrade in oh four. So it needs to get replaced. We'll be working on that and that will be heavy on consultant support. Forward, uh, the, the blower, thirty thousand dollars, that's more programmatic. Trying to get to a place of not. Certainly we need pumps on hand and blowers on hand for immediate replacement, but. I want to get in a better way of going through on an annual basis. Once they get to a certain age and just replacing them prior to them breaking down, that gives us two things. One, we're not reactive, then two. Normally the blower, the motor won't be so far gone, we can't rebuild it, so we can rebuild a lot of these as long as they're not destroyed from. Full, full, uh, degradation, so there are some. You know, impacts and some, some benefits to, to being more proactive. And again, we're at a fifteen year lifespan now on this plant, so a lot of the things are aged to a point of needing to be replaced. A mobile pump unit, I believe that was already bid. Prior to my rear arrival and we had some issue with maybe some of the, the. Settings and needs, so we're going to clean that up and. Re, rebuild that work for this budget request and this is for pumping in areas that. If we have failure and there's no other way to get sewage out, we have to get sewage out, so we would, would take the place of a fixed. Uh, lift station that we have at the back of Taylor's Ridge, Legacy, well, not Legacy Ridge now, it's inside North Hill. Uh, North Hill, Cherry Valley Vista, River Railroad Avenue, and now we have the new one at North Hill. Um, because if something happens, power's out, yes, we have generators, but if something else happens, you know, this is a double redundancy. Over and above generators for the, the primary redundancy need. That is sewer in a nutshell. Thoughts or questions on that? The, the programming makes sense for INI. I know that was a little clunky how we put the. How I put the package together inside the narrative, but could have done better.
Alright, um, so we are running close to nine thirty, so when we hit nine thirty, if folks want to continue on, we'll need to, to have a motion for that, but in the meantime. Um, looking for any questions or comments for Mr. Lenashevsky. Uh, Councilmember Lingle.
Let's see, do I have my thing off? Okay, went, oh, want to make sure I have my thing off. Um, I'll just start by saying I've discussed my concerns with administration. I understand and, uh. Why I think this was put into the two year budget, the, all of these CIPs. Um, budgets should be based on reasonable expectations. Of revenues and expenses within the timeframe that is being voted upon. I believe that we need to prioritize some of these projects. So that we have a more realistic understanding of what can be done. With, uh, within our, our public work systems and the staffing that we have. We have very, um, we have talented. Um, but we don't have project managers that can completely clone themselves to take on a fourteen million dollar CIP. In, uh, in a two year period. So I guess the feedback, um, I have, and again, I've discussed this with Steve and others. Is that we do prioritize the projects that we think can be reasonably successfully and within budget. Undertaken in the two year period. That as a council, we support our public works by making sure there is budgeted funds for predevelopment activities. That will help us, um, assure projects can be, uh, completed within funds available. I think Steve has been totally a forthright in identifying that many of these projects. Are based on numbers from as far back as I think the oldest one, Steve was, uh, two thousand twelve. Um, and it seems like that we have, where we have come into conflict with each other. Is because we have not, um. We have not done, and this is not a criticism, we have not perhaps dedicated enough resources to public works. To do more upfront, uh, predevelopment planning, uh, particularly on big projects. So what I would like to see in the budget. Is, uh, A, a prioritization. Um, Steve and I have discussed some projects that are obvious that we've already applied for grant funds for. Um, I would like to see those projects, um, adequate funds be, uh, clearly delineated in. The budget and hopefully approved for, uh, the kind of predevelopment work that I believe public works deserves. And, um, and in that context, also I think we need to be very mindful. That we have limited project management, um. Staff, again, not a reflection on their abilities, um, in public works. That we also have things that pipes break and emergencies occur and people are pulled in multiple directions. And we should be really realistic about what they can successfully undertake in the two year period and. And those are my comments on the C, CIP overall. We still have projects from twenty twenty that still have to be implemented like the depot. And, um, we can't forget those. So, um, I, I've thought a lot about the CIP, uh, perhaps obviously. And I care about it a great deal and, um, it is the guts of what we're supposed to do as the city, so. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Councilmember Lingle. Um, is there anyone else that would like to speak? Councilmember Napland, sorry, I was scrolling between the, the screens here to see everybody.
I just want to say it does seem like an awfully big list and maybe a few things got added towards the end and once you add them all up, it, it does. Uh, it does seem like a lot to, to undertake for a two year period. I don't know the best way to approach. Um, trying to sort that out about what's the, the higher priority i- items, um. But I do like the idea of doing a little bit more, um, pre-designed, just, you know, making sure we understand the, the full scope of the project. The, the other, I just had a silly question on the UV system replacement. I have it in my mind that we'd approved it at some previous, maybe it was a UV. Light, like a variable light, or is this something totally different? I don't, I feel like we approved this once before, I guess is what I'm saying.
I believe it came forward right before I got back and it was more of a plug and play, purchase, replace. Which based on financial thresholds, I think was next.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so.
I, I feel like I remember it being potentially qualifying for a capacity, so it'd be in. You know, growth related because it would increase the capacity. Is that, is that the same thing?
Not necessarily increase the capacity, but as we increase our capacity, it should be sized and, and replaced appropriately to. Not limit us, right? If we need to process one point two MGD now, but we know in the future we'll be at one point seven five, we, we wanted to. From what I understood and talked again to Mike Marty about, we want to make sure that was the design that was implemented and installed, so. Or have the ability to add to this with additional lighting. They're just lights, honestly, but then, you know, high power lights, but, yeah, so coming up with a, a system that works, he and I talked. So we just need to get it back on the forefront.
Okay. Okay, on our capacity at this point, um, just with all the growth coming in, there's no concerns about any projects that we need to be watching for in the horizon.
Yeah, so we will be bringing, we're, we're trying to finalize the CIP list with, um, parameters for the sewer. So that is typically when you're at eighty percent of your capacities, when you need to start looking at your upgrades. And we're getting really close to that process capacity with our plant, so yes, the, the time is now that we begin. Understanding the upgrades for the fourth train and then, you know, this is one of those too, we, we wouldn't short sell its process.
Alright, Mr. Lenashevsky, I'm going to put you on hold for a second. We need a motion to extend the meeting.
Mike Remington, I move that we extend the meeting time.
Second, McHenry.
Alright, any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, please say no. Motion passes. Go ahead, Councilmember and Mr. Lenashevsky.
Uh, Mr. Nicky, are you?
I just wanted to say hi.
Sorry, I can't use the technology to wave my hand, so I'm, and I don't see anything except your thing, so I'm thinking, do they see me? Um, I just wanted to comment. Um, I just wanted to comment that being that it's a two-year process of, um, projects that you're putting down. And I'm fine with what you have listed here and I know from experience that if anything changes, you'll bring that forward. We can always amend. And so what you currently have listed, I'm very supportive of that. And you know, if we don't even reach all those projects in the two-year period, they then get carried over. But we always have the option for amending and adjusting as we go. So I, I don't have any problem with all the recommendations you have that are listed for your C I P.
And I know Dana has been instrumental too. If you look at the line item budget, again, associating costs for construction. And then the front-end soft costs, making sure design and any other needs are, are, you know, minimally listed at least. That we know we're not just, yeah, oh, it's a million dollars, we're going to build it. Well, no, there's, there's design permitting normally, other, other elements for implementation and consultant support. So she's, she's kind of guided us in making sure we add a little more, you know, upfront understanding. But I, I, I like what I hear. And I think from Councilmember Lengel, you know, specific to, let's pick on a water project. Um, we have our water consultant on call and I can, you know, we can begin to provide those. Specific look at pre-planning level, you know, scopes and, and estimates at fairly simply. And honestly, they're all listed in our C I P. We're going through the water C I P at the same time. So everything is being updated, but. You know, I know we have a, a confident but small competent staff and we'd love to do it all too. And yes, we will have to prioritize. And sometimes, you know, for streets and storm, that priority becomes what is grant funded because, you know, let's face it, we're never going to build a road project. Or very rarely will we be building without someone else's money involved. So. I think being flexible, but yet understanding and prioritizing is critical. I hate to add more time to this, but I, I still have storm and it's, I think two slides. And then I think the, the other part of this group's implementation in programming, like with I N I. And I think I explained this to maybe Councilmember Napa and then Lengel. That is going to be a huge undertaking in community involvement and outreach. And the, you know, the impetus is people think you're tearing up their backyard, right? Old Town is sewer alley loaded. So not in people's front yards, but there's an alley back there in almost all those roads. And I know Diane was around when a certain council member said a certain word and it made people kind of, you know, get, uh, elevated. So we have to be careful, but I'm not doing that project until we set some, some bumpers as a group. Because we will all be involved in that. No matter how simple it seems, uh, we will all be involved. So we want to make sure that's, um, thought, thought, thoughtfully put together prior to even moving forward on, on anything. So I'll just jump real quick into storm. Uh, so the images here.
Sorry, can I interrupt for a quick second? I have to run to Bellevue. There's firefight, there's a fire truck at one of my mom's houses.
Okay, go.
And I don't, I'm so sorry. I got, my phone started ringing off the hook.
Councilmember, go, go and do what you need to do. I hope all turns out well.
Okay.
Bye.
Bye.
That is unfortunate.
Yes.
So yeah, the, the image on the screen here is kind of a small facility projects. I was speaking of the top right. It is a, a ditch that has a thirty inch pipe under a yard that then discharges into one of our ponds that routinely was plugged. You can see that is plugged purposely. There, there is a board in the way. We were testing out the, uh, the little metal arm in front. Is sensing technology that sends us information on water depth. So we, um, try not to flood this homeowner's yard. So anyway, little things like this come up that aren't budgeted items, but I think we need some flexibility and some strategy in how we deploy. This type of work. It is important. It is critical, maybe not to the system, but it's certainly important to that homeowner and, um. You know, we tried to do the best we can. The bottom image there, it's hard to see those are three culverts stuck together over time. They're just half buried, submerged, rotting. So things like that need to get, need to get managed. Normally they would be part of a larger project, but sometimes they're, they're, the rest of the facility is fine, but there's a couple of things that need to be tweaked. So. That, those images are on one of our bigger problem areas that are not growth related, but existing facilities that over time. Um, this, this Miller Street Road Network existed as road crown and then ditch and of course culverts at driveways. But now it is, you know, turned into parking and the similar pipe types, the similar pipe sizes. Boardwalks are in there. It is just a mess. So. We are looking at some kind of program to get in there, you know, come up with a design that fits. No one's going to be happy. Because, you know, the perception is A, either they lose some yard or B, you know, we put ditches back that they fought hard to get rid of. But, you know, there, there has to be some middle ground because not everything needs to be piped, but, um, so this is, this is a recipient of some forethought next year. And one of the programs, you know, Larissa graduated from Seattle U and they do offer a. A program and design approach through one of their senior classes where they have a, you know, a design team guided by a professor and it's relatively cheap. So we thought that might be something to give us some options and put a little seed money into something that, uh. Needs more than one approach because, you know, a standard curb gutter sidewalk or standard curb and gutter and, and pipe network isn't necessarily going to fit here. So. It, it would be likely grant eligible. So that is good news for a D O, Department of Ecology retrofit. That's kind of forefront. And I think sometimes two priorities change, uh, after a storm. I mean, sometimes things just change that fast, not forever utility, but of course for, for stormwater it is. Day by day nowadays out there. And now that concludes the C I P list. I have appreciated the conversation. I know we, I, I would certainly have no problem taking a look. You know, my staff went and put this together. We sat, um, specific to, you know, the, the engineering work, not necessarily the overall capital work that had other department involvement. But, you know, this is a big list. Obviously prioritizing it is, is no, no problem per se. And putting some forethought into some of the costs we don't know to help us strategize what does get deployed when. So there's, I'm not surprised by anything I've heard. I'm encouraged and. The good news is currently on these C I Ps exclusive of facilities, it's a different funding mechanism. You know, the resources are available for the storm sewer and water projects. But yes, certainly we can prioritize and, and move forward from here. Any other thoughts and comments that we missed? Ms, Ms. Lengel.
Councilmember Lengel.
I, I, I guess this is really a comment for the, to the council, which is that. My experience when you're doing, you know, major projects and what, you know, these are all a series of major proj, I mean, there's some smaller ones obviously, but a lot of them are major projects. We really need to be looking at our budgeting and how we look at our fund sources. Um, understanding that, uh, even when we're given a number, that we should probably ha, have a, an understanding of what kind of contingency. We need to be prepared, um, to access if there's a market change or, you know, a survey or environmental. Unearth something else and, um, and we, it, from what I've seen so far, we don't necessarily look at projects that way. Finance has been talking a lot about total development cost and, um, presentations. And I think that that i- is, um, a direction we should all move. So, you know, every time I've done a major project, um, there's always been an acknowledgement about some need for contingency funds. That doesn't mean you designed the contingency number, but it does mean that when you budget. You keep that in consideration as you're allocating your resources and especially when you have a large C I P need. We don't want to end up in a situation where we have underestimated the need against say a REIT or any other fund. And the nice thing about this budget is we do see, um, you know, sort of the operating margin. That's a great way that Dana did it. But, you know, until we have updated numbers and public works has access to, uh, more resources in the planning stage. Um, we just have, that's our responsibility, I think, as a council to keep that in mind when we're looking at allocation of resources.
Mayor Portem Remington.
Thank you, Mayor. By the way, Bellevue fires only on one response right now and that's still home with a minor gas leak. So, uh, there's only one engine unseen. So I, I think it's probably pretty minor. So we'll just be praying that Michelle's place is safe there. Uh, Steve, uh, I, I really appreciate, uh, uh, Councilmember Lengel's input. It does look like it's a pretty aggressive schedule. But I, I'm also used to seeing, uh, aggressive schedule like that. These aren't monies that we'd say, hey, you know, if we don't spend it on a road or on water sewer or storm, we're, we're going to spend it elsewhere. Uh, these are pretty specific. Uh, I also realize that these items, um, uh, will have to come to council. Either by contract and so we'll hear a lot more detail. Uh, I feel a little bit more comfortable, although I agree, I, I think it's pretty aggressive. And we need to prioritize those just for the sake of staff and time and, and all, and not get overwhelmed. Um, the projects themselves, I really like the looks of them, especially those that are technology related. They're going to increase efficiency for our staff. And I think there's actually a huge measure of safety by, uh, having these. Instead of someone going out and having to look at something, it's monitored twenty-four hours a day and give that opportunity, uh, for folks to even potentially control valves. And readjust water flow from, you know, from a computer and that potentially could be from someone's home. So anyway, I just see a lot of good in there, Steve. Uh, I know there was a lot of hard work. I agree that some of the numbers look like they're preliminary and so that's really tough in a budget, especially when you're talking millions. But we also realize that there are placeholders, that money is either sitting in an account, you know, or we are saying, hey, I might be using it. I feel more comfortable just because I know you would come to us, we would have more discussion, more exact numbers. Before we actually take action on it. So, uh, ton of work that you've done and I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, any, any other questions or feedback for Mr. Lenashevsky on the capital plan? I'm not seeing any, but I did get a word from Chief Hurt that he wanted to update the council on F O P negotiations. So, um, if you're okay with us taking a point of privilege and letting him do that, uh, that'll be our last item of business for the evening.
Thank you, Mary. Yeah, just real quick, I wanted to let council know that the city did inter-negotiations yesterday with the F O P. It was a long day, I understand there. And, uh, they have scheduled three additional meetings throughout the end of the year. Uh, two more in November and one in December. Hopefully they can solidify something by the end of those, those three meetings. But, um, certainly it will be brought to a closed session if, uh, they get to a point where you need to get involved. But I just want to let you know those negotiations have started.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Chief Hurt. And with that, unless there are objections, we are adjourned. Thanks all.